The Topeka City Council meeting will come to order. Please stand if you are able for the invocation. Give your attention to Councilwoman Cleer and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'd like to introduce Jeremy Leidoff, who has served as youth pastor for Mayor Athena, Baptist Fellowship in Topeka for six and a half years. Along with serving as a youth pastor, Jeremy has been a Topeka Public Schools Police Officer for two years at Topeka High.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you so much for this opportunity to gather and to discuss your business. Lord, I pray right now for the city of Topeka as the leaders gather to discuss business. I pray for everyone in this room, Lord, that you would guide their speech, that you would guide their thoughts as they conduct business tonight, that it would be uplifting to you and encouraging. I pray that we would continue to seek you as we go out from this meeting. Lord, we thank you so much in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
There was a proclamation scheduled for this evening, but the representatives of Mars Chocolates could not be here, those intended to be here, so that possibly will be rescheduled for a later time. There are no presentations, so we will proceed with the roll call.
Mayor Wogas.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Cleer.
Here.
Ortiz.
Shum.
Here.
De La Isla.
Here.
Jensen.
Present.
Schwartz.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
And Harmon.
And Councilwoman Ortiz is ill this evening. Councilmembers, there are no additions or deletions to the minutes, to the agenda. We will have two executive sessions that I believe you are made aware of, so we will proceed with the consent agenda.
A is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Donna Rae Pearson to the Topeka Landmarks Commission for a term ending March 1, 2019. B is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Mark Ruel to the Topeka Shawnee County Riverfront Authority Board for a term ending August 31, 2017. C are minutes of the regular meeting of February 16, 2016, and there's one application for open after midnight for Boss Hogs located at 2833 Southwest 29th Street, and staff is recommending approval.
That is the consent agenda. Your pleasure. Councilwoman De La Isla.
Motion, Mr. Mayor.
Deputy Mayor seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor vote yes. Opposed vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
And nine having voted yes, the consent agenda is approved. We do have our new appointment to the Topeka Landmarks Commission. Donna, if you would stand, Donna Rae Pearson is, we're glad to have you joining, and we appreciate your service and opportunity to serve on the Landmarks Commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will proceed then with the action items. The clerk would read.
A is approval of a real estate lease agreement to provide office and training space at the National Guard Armory for use by the Topeka Police Department.
Your city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Chief Brown walks forward to provide information on this and answer any questions, I want to point out one thing. On Wednesday, February 24 last week, he had provided some information to the body for review. I do want to point out that generally, we would bring this item forward for a discussion-only item prior to any action, really for no purpose other than some miscommunication. This came forward as an item for action. What I would like to recommend to this body or suggest to this body is, as you're considering it, if everybody feels comfortable with it, certainly go forward. If you get to the end of the discussion, you feel like, from a process perspective, it needs another week out there for discussion and input by others, certainly feel free to do that, and we would ask that it be postponed a week, but leave it up to the body.
Okay, thank you. Chief Brown.
Thank you, city manager, Mr. Mayor, elected leaders. In 2014, upon my arrival, as we were looking at ways to be more efficient on a police department, it was quickly discovered that our current real estate space at the law enforcement center for our academy is approximately 2,000 square foot. It seemed to be problematic during their first academy. There was just a lot of interruptions and things that would happen at the law enforcement center. In checking with the Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center, they have six satellites. We're the only satellite in the state of Kansas that does not have a standalone facility. And there's a lot of reasons behind that. For those that are in the business of instructing students, it just becomes very problematic to have law enforcement students in a law enforcement center with so much business going on every single day. So facing increased media scrutiny and public demands, law enforcement at 21st Century must continue to trend towards more technology, tactically and socially advanced police forces, and the need of well-trained law enforcement officers has never been greater. The Topeka Police Department must continually review the training programs and the training facilities available to their officers and staff in order to meet modern demands. As I mentioned earlier, we started looking at this in about 2014, so it's been a long process. We were, however, making sure we did our due diligence to find the right spot with the things that the Topeka Police Department was looking for. Developing a standalone police training facility is the solution for several concerns that were related in the handout that was passed out last week on the concerns of having students in the law enforcement center. We've also talked about over the last couple of years about increasing the footprint of the Topeka Police Department in our community and embedding as many officers as we can in our community and not having all 300 sworn officers report to one location for work every day. And we were able to accomplish this earlier this year when we moved community policing to both East and West Patrol. And I think that the citizens and everybody really appreciated that move and appreciates having those extra patrols and cars in their neighborhoods. This would accomplish the same thing in the area of 27th Topeka Boulevard by having more of that police influence and more of that police traffic in that particular area of our city. The challenge to moving the academy offsite has always been finding a location suitable for our needs as well as being affordable. One of the other documents that I sent to the elected leaders was an article from CJ Online, and it was dated February 21, where the Capital Journal did an article on available office space limited in Topeka, lease rates are increasing. I thought that was important during this time based upon the rates that we were able to negotiate with the National Guard. As we know, the Nickel Armory is working towards consolidating their facilities to Forbes Field. A lot of their resources will be moving to Forbes Field to better occupy that space that's currently at the Air Force Base, which left a lot of real estate space empty. Early on, we were looking for some partners to partner with to move into that facility, so we made contact with the Shawnee County District Attorney's Office, and District Attorney Chad Taylor is also going to move some of his office space into that facility that's going to be just adjacent to ours. So we'll have the Shawnee County District Attorney's Office and the Topeka Police Department co-located in the same wing of a building, which I think will better help our partnership as well. Some of the great things about this location, not only do we move from 15,000 square feet of space, leaving a facility that only had 2,000 square foot of space, it's going to better serve our patrol officers and the way that they train. It does have a gymnasium, so that gymnasium would be available for our officers not only to do physical fitness training, but to do defensive tactics training as well. It is a secured facility, so as you drive through, you'll see that it is a gated community with two entry and exit points, and they are manned by security officers. They're Kansas law enforcement officers, and during the hours of darkness and on time's office, you enter with a proximity card if you're allowed access into the facility. So it would create a safer environment for our recruits to do their training and not have to worry about any type of outside influence. The outdoor securers will allow our recruits to train in many different facets of their training curriculum throughout the four to five months that they're doing their in-house training. It's a secured compound, so we wouldn't have to worry about their security. They would be able to train without having to put that extra security on them as they would go out for their PT runs and things of that nature. Parking, it has plenty of parking right now. We are running out of parking spots at the law enforcement center. For those that come, like during budget season, I know the elected leaders come to the facility to do all the budgeting stuff, you'll see that parking is a premium, so this would alleviate some of that. For example, last academy class, we had 27 recruits that drove 27 vehicles to the parking lot at LEC, plus the instructors. This would alleviate that and move that to the new facility. Future expansion, it would allow for future expansion because they do have lots and lots of real estate that they will be leasing out as they move more military forces out to Forbes Field. There's also dedicated space for our firearms training simulator. We have not had one for quite a while, and we really need one. That's imperative to our success because that firearm training simulator is how we train our officers for those shoot-don't-shoot scenarios, and it's also good because we could have the public come in and put them through the scenario so that they understand what their law enforcement officers are going through and how quick these reactionary drives happen. So not only is it for our officers, it's also for our community members, so we can bring them in and train them basically on the same things that we're training on law enforcement officers. And this funding would come from the Special Law Enforcement Trust Fund. We do have a fund set aside for a Special Law Enforcement Trust Fund that we get from seizures and things that we take from our drugs transactions, so we was going to want to take $100,000 out of that fund to buy this firearm training simulator. Another capability that would open up, so as we set through the budgeting process last year, and we went through the LEC Center, myself and the audiovisual folks from Channel Four, from Topeka Channel Four, we were talking about the audio setup, and you can remember we had the wires and everything on the floors, and it was just kind of a trip hazard, just stuff was out. We were able to find $28,000 at the end of the year between their budget and our budget, so the equipment's already been bought. So the same technology that we have here in this room will be available in the law enforcement center in that classroom that we call Classroom A and Classroom B, so the setup will be exactly the same. So if our community groups anywhere in the city or county want to come to our facility to have a meeting, a neighborhood meeting, and they want to televise live so we can continue with that transparency, we'll have that capability to do that with the equipment that we bought last year, trying to anticipate this move coming up first quarter of this year. This has been something that's been on our radar since 2014. We've openly talked about it. We've discussed it. You know, as you know, property in Topeka, to buy property is very expensive. We don't have a couple million dollars to build a new facility, and you know, with most of the rates here in Topeka, the average is $15 to $21 a square feet. We was able to negotiate this for $6 a square foot for standalone space and $1 a square foot for shared space. So, and this is something that was offered to everybody, not just the Topeka Police Department, but Shawnee County got the same deal that the Topeka Police Department got, so this is something that they're just working with the county, the city, the state to offer this real estate up for. So in summary, in the modern era, police training, this is significant importance of the safety and well-being of our communities, and the value of a well-trained police force should not be overlooked. Such a facility would benefit recruit officers and veteran officers alike and would allow for additional regional-style trainings to be conducted that could generate revenue through tuitions. The Topeka Police Department is also looking for a diverse group of qualified people interested in becoming Topeka police officers. A training facility such as this would be a valuable asset and recruiting tool as we compete for an ever-dwindling pull of young people interested in law enforcement. So this does conclude my brief, and I will now open it up and stand for questions.
All right, thank you. And again, this, as we are aware, the National Guard is relocating and making these facilities as they do, federal government makes it available to taxing authorities, the state, county, I know the school districts also are looking at using some of the space there.
Yes, sir.
So I think it is very helpful to all the taxing entities. How many weeks a year do we have a recruit program underway approximately? I know one goes for a period of time, and you have, then you're starting another one or the typical in the last few years.
Yeah, it's about 900 hours, so you're looking at about six months for the recruit to be in residence, training academically, and it's about another six weeks of the FTO program, so it's about a year process. So the recruits that we just started Monday, and we started a class of 14, they won't be in a police car by themselves till about this time next year.
Okay.
The class of 27 that we released last year, that we graduated in December, they'll be released in June, so please know that you'll have more bodies on the street come summertime this summer.
Good, thank you. Questions? Councilman Jensen.
Thank you. I do very much support this for our recruits. However, that facility does not look appealing to the public at all, so I would recommend that if we're going to do some audiovisual work, that we install all of that equipment in the existing training rooms at the law enforcement center, that's a much more appealing building for the public to come and use for that sort of thing. When you have a facility surrounded by fence with armed guards, I can't imagine a neighborhood meeting wanting to meet there and use that technology. I'm afraid the money would be better spent with the facilities we own downtown.
Yes, sir. So all the current technology will remain in LEC. That $28,000 that I alluded to, that was for the LEC building.
I'm sorry, run that by me again, because right now, when we're at the LEC, there's wires all over the floor.
Yes, sir. So to alleviate that, we set money aside last year's budget, so Channel Four kind of guided this through, and they bought $28,000 of equipment that they will install into the LEC.
So that's not going in the new training center.
So hopefully by this budget year, when we start meeting in June, when you go to the LEC, everything's going to be much like it is here, and it will be.
I'm sorry, I understood that was going in the proposed training facility in that base.
No, sir. Some of the funding that we'll be utilizing is going to come from that Special Law Enforcement Trust Fund to get the equipment to the new facility. Right now, we have a little bit over a million dollars in our Special Law Enforcement Trust Funds. We've been very good stewards of our money, and we've been kind of saving, anticipating, and hoping that this would be approved by the governing body so we could take some of that money, $100,000 for the firearm strength simulator, the amount whatever it will take to do the information technology for the students in the new, and that way, the law enforcement center, everything maintains as-is or will increase, you know, what we currently have with that $28,000 that was set aside last year.
Excellent. I think it's a great idea. I say do it.
Thank you, sir.
So the new training center is really in a secure area primarily, correct?
The proposed 27th Topeka Boulevard?
Yes.
Yes, it's a secure location with two entry and access.
Right. I mean, it's so public, it's really not a public location. There would not be public meetings there. It's something.
Correct.
A recruit, right?
We would open up the law enforcement center, which is a 24/7 operation, so if a neighborhood group wanted to meet at 9 o'clock at night, they would be able to come in, and we would be able to host any type of neighborhood group meeting or event or anything, if we wanted to go live and put it out for the public to view. Hopefully by this summer, we'll have that capability.
Okay, all right. Other questions, discussion items? Deputy Mayor Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. I've got a short list. I think they'll go fast.
Yes, ma'am.
I think it's a great idea. I have heard about it more really from the guard side, I guess, as this whole transition was happening. You talked about a total regular cost of about $57,000 a year for both the sole-use space and the shared space, and then I just wanted to get an idea what that net cost is going to be to us. You talked about being able to get revenue from trainings. Are there going to be some costs that places we lease now that we won't have to anymore? That, you know, are there going to be some reduced expenses? Is there some new revenue? What's your net cost?
So we're not real sure right now what type of events we're going to be bringing in, but I do know that, like the Kansas City metropolitan area, they host a lot of events because they have the space. We currently don't have that space. So police training is very expensive, and a lot of our training that we send our officers to, it could be up to a couple hundred dollars per officer to send them through the training. So I think that we would be a good place here to start doing some stuff like that and get more of the local communities around Topeka to send their officers here instead of to the Kansas City metro area or to the Omaha metro area. So that number, I'm not real sure what that looks like until we start putting it out.
Okay, well, I would hope that we could net it out. I mean, because you're right, saving not only training expenses but travel expenses. When I went to SEPTED here, it didn't cost the police department anything because the police department sold tickets, is what I called it, and invited people from other agencies, and that paid for the trainer, and nobody had to go anywhere, and I really liked that concept, so I was pleased to see it here. So I was just checking to see if you.
You know, and another aspect that law enforcement executives will look at it, we call it windshield time. You know, it takes an officer seven hours of windshield time to drive from somewhere to the Kansas City area, the Omaha area. So that windshield time, you try to minimize that because you'd rather have the officer work in the street than in a car driving somewhere to training.
Absolutely. If I may, Mayor.
Sure.
In terms of the lease, truthfully, I didn't read the whole thing, but I appreciated your cutting out the sections that were specific to our arrangement in there. Is that shared cost use, are those charges fixed even if some other tenant pulls out?
To my understanding, yes.
It says in there that the guard gets first shot at any of the shared use rooms. How much time are you expecting the guard to be there?
Little to none because they're moving most of their forces out to the Forbes complex.
And that will include, like, the weekends?
Yes.
So all that will no longer.
Correct.
Be there. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to commend you for a job well done with this, and I have attended trainings out there at the Armory, and it's very nice, and I think if we have neighborhood meetings out there, they'll welcome the feeling of being safe. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Other questions, discussion? Do you, council members, do you wish to take action tonight, or do you want to reconsider, vote for another week? Is there a motion? Councilman Harmon.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd make a motion to approve the lease agreement.
Okay, it's been moved to approve the lease agreement. Councilwoman De La Isla, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor vote yes. Opposed vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the real estate agreement is approved. That concludes the action items for this evening. We will go to the non-action items. If the clerk would read.
A is discussion regarding capital improvement plan, completed projects, and construction project overview.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Over the last couple of years, as we've initiated conversations pertaining to budget, I think we all agreed that the CIP really didn't get a lot of focus and attention, and we have worked in conjunction with you to provide information on projects that have been completed to date. A lot of decisions made in the past, and really, people never went back and looked at it, so we've been doing, I think, a good job and certainly continuing to try to be better at letting people know what has resulted of the decisions that you've made previously. This evening really is an important step, is we initiate the budget process to take a look at historically the capital improvement program, in addition, provide a bit of an overview as we go forward. I will turn this over to Mr. Gerber.
Thank you. Mr. Gerber.
Mayor, council, and Mr. Manager, thank you. My task this evening is to kick off our 2017 through 2021 CIP process, and we're going to do that by looking backwards. But first thing we want to do is do just a few, what I would call, housekeeping items. This will be review for some of you who've sat through a CIP process before. Hopefully, it's still educational, and hopefully, it's educational for those of you who haven't sat through a CIP process yet. First thing I would do is point you to our newly established CIP page, topeka.org. I should back up. It has to be www.topeka.org/cip. If you just do topeka.org at this point, it doesn't work, so we need to, we're working on getting that fixed. In that, it has the proposed CIP. It has documents relating to previous CIPs. It has our storybook, which I'm going to walk through tonight, and it also has something that Ally and her staff put together, Topeka &amp; Two, on the CIP process, and so it's a storehouse of knowledge for folks. But at this point, I just want to pull up our CIP storybook, and I'll start by saying that the credit for this project goes to Amber Reynolds, and I'm just going to have her stand up and wave so you know who she is. Amber doesn't get a lot of recognition, but she is our GIS manager, relatively newly hired, maybe nine months new, and just doing an outstanding job in running our GIS program, among other things. And so she helped put this together. So what is a CIP? Not to get too elementary, but CIP stands for Capital Improvement Program, Capital Improvement Plan, and for most cities, it's generally a four-to-10-year plan that talks about and identifies capital needs as well as capital funding sources. And so the first part of this storybook just sort of walks through what that is. In the city of Topeka, our tradition is to adopt a five-year CIP, so a five-year plan with a three-year CIB, Capital Improvement Budget. So in the next month or so, when the council eventually considers and adopts the CIP, they'll be adopting the five-year plan as well as the associated three-year budget with that plan, and that adoption will, will in fact authorize expenditures for three years' worth of those projects. That's why you have the three-year CIB and the five-year CIP. So say that fast five times, see where you get you. This project, or this storybook, walks through how we define a CIP in the city of Topeka. I'm not going to go through and read all these things, but it talks about construction of new facilities costing at least $50,000, remodeling costing at least $25,000, a general infrastructure project, and it illustrates the fact that our CIP is based on priorities that have been identified by the council: fiscal impact, health, safety, environment, economic viability, and comprehensive plan. In Topeka, we have traditionally had about seven funding sources for our CIP. The first of those and most commonly associated with the CIP is GEO bonds. That stands for General Offication Bonds, and that's where a bond is secured by our pledge, the city's pledge, to use all available resources to repay the funds, including tax revenue, so. The second, and really the largest typically of our funding sources, is revenue bonds. That's typically associated with our utility projects, but also potential parking projects. We also have, well-known to all of us, the citywide and the countywide half-cent sales tax, federal funds. We do, in our current CIP, have approximately $25 million in federal funds. That's typically going to involve bridge work and the like, and then, when available, when appropriate, cash funding is always an option. The storybook just also walks through various components of the CIP, and I'm not going to go through all those in detail, but it goes through neighborhoods, goes through streets, utilities, public safety, facilities, traffic projects, quality-of-life projects. What I think is a pretty cool feature of this is it ties to our open data source, and you can look through and see where the funding is going, broken down by, you know, different categories, and so the average citizen of the council will be able to get on here and explore that and figure out where the funds have come from. And then finally, what I think is the most interesting part of what we're doing this year with this, with our CIP projects, is the 10-year look-back on a map. And as you look at this visually, you can see that there's a lot of projects up there that have happened over the last 10 years. It's pretty intuitive. It's point and click. It lets you break down projects by status, so you can break it down by completed projects, under-construction, in-design, planned, tentative. If you go to the next part of the storybook, you can break it down by funding source. So you could, and that's easily clickable, so if you wanted to click on a project and figure out what the funding source was, then it will pop up and tell you that the funding source was Water Utility Fund. The project happened in this year. This is where it happened, some kind of nerdy data. It'll tell you the project ID number and some stuff that's maybe more internal, but also a way to identify the project. This is super exciting. It's just a really interactive and great way to demonstrate the story that we've been trying to tell, that is, these are all the great things that have happened over the last, now it's 11 years. We started last year with a 10-year look-back, now it's an 11-year. If you wanted to isolate just certain years or funds, if you just wanted to know what the half-wide or citywide half-cent projects were, click on that. click on that and it should pop up with what they are. It always works really great during the demo and then...
What if you put 2004 in there?
Maybe. Let's skip that one. We'll move on to project year. So if you wanted to, you can break down projects by every year. And again, it's just kind of a point-and, point-and-click. If you just wanted to do 2015, you could isolate those projects. If you wanted to do, go back and look at 2004, you could do that. Once we get the CIP for the upcoming years finalized, all that data will go in here. And so folks will be able to look ahead and look back as, as to what projects have been accomplished. So that's, that's really a five-minute overview of what's been a, about a six-month project in the making. We're really excited about this and think it's going to really be a great way again for us to tell our story. So at this point, I'm glad to run through other items. I'm also glad to stand for questions. We have a lot of public works and utility staff here who would also be available to stand for any questions that you might have.
So actually, we, we really need to go online and do this, to open these up, to see them. You better understand to see the potential of what it shows in each of these areas.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Again, it's, we can go through projects that you might have an interest in tonight. We, we also, we're trying to move to this digital format, but recognizing that some council did appreciate and enjoy having the 10-year look-back in bulk, we will also have that available for you so that you can have that and go through all the, all those projects that way.
Well, that, that will also then be like the total expenditures for those years. Something like that would be there.
That's correct. Yes.
Because I know some people are concerned that with the streets as they are, that, I've been asked, well, did you cut back on what you've been doing in the last year or two? Because, you know, there, there seems to be, there are so much worse than there used to be. But all of a sudden, but I think this would be able to, it would be able to show what we did in 2015. Right, 14, 15, something like that. Correct?
Correct. This should, this should be able to tell you every year what, what took place in that year.
Why don't we discuss this for a bit? Councilwoman Claire?
I know I've heard this before, but are we on track? Are we, are we behind? Are we on track? Are we caught up?
Councilwoman Claire, just, just so I understand your question better, on track with what specifically?
The projects.
Have all the projects for 15 been completed? Now we're ready for 16?
Okay. The answer to that is, I'm going to give you kind of a general answer and then I'll answer that specifically. And hopefully, that will help. What we try to do, and I should have said this from the beginning, what we try to do in our CIP process is the reason we have a three-year CIB is we traditionally like to have the first year as a planning slash design year. And then the second year is right-of-way acquisition, tweaking of things. And then the third year actually becomes a construction year. Anytime you undertake major projects, there's an ebb and flow to those. And sometimes, sometimes things don't go exactly as planned. So the answer is, are all of the 2015 projects complete? The answer is no. But to say that we're behind, I don't know that that's an accurate assessment either.
When we get this next week, you'll show what, what the projects were for 15, correct?
When you get the?
The CIP, the plan for the next years. I mean, typically, we show what last year's, what last year's plan was, is included.
In the past, or in the current CIP?
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
So, I mean, that's, I think that helps to then we see what we, what was on the 15-year. And we can look at it and see or ask questions. If there's something we, you know, what's status or anything like that.
Correct. And again, part of the point of tonight, I obviously am not going through every project that's on here. We could certainly talk specific projects if people have questions about those. But this is more generic overview and a look back at all the projects that we have done in a general sense.
Okay, all right. Councilwoman Jensen?
First off, I want to say bravo. I think this is fantastic. It's fun and easy for anyone to use. Is it possible to break down the projects by council district?
Yeah, they are.
It is. I neglected to mention that.
I didn't see this. There was. That's a simple yes, is all I need. I'm just curious, but.
Yes.
Fantastic work, guys.
Which council did?
Is Brendan here? What's the name of the otter in the picture?
Yeah, I know. Is that?
Really, this is a great way to show the community what we're doing, what we're planning, and how their tax revenue is being used to implement change. So fantastic work, guys.
Councilwoman Schwartz?
I'll be real brief. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was, I think, on the front of it, and it's really the ticket. This is fabulous. This is, I'm really interested in graphics, and this is really good. But I just love the caption down at the bottom, as we all know what Topeka means, a great place to grow potatoes. Thank you.
Councilwoman, Deputy Mayor Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I too want to compliment you. I, I've been asking for a long time. And steadily, there have been printed maps that showed multiple funding sources and multiple years. And to see this and for, for anybody to be able to go in. Of course, this is right after we told you to take our docking stations out. But I guess we'll be able to figure it out if we need to bring our computers after all. This, this is great. I want to back up Councilwoman Clear's question too, though, because there are some things that, you know, you may want to be prepared for as we keep talking about this. I know, for instance, that we're two years behind on alleys, which are important to me. I don't think we've done any in the last two years. And was going to ask if we were hoping to get caught up or whether the, whether it was pushing down and so on as we delve into this. So I hope we can answer.
Deputy Mayor Hiller, Mr. Mayor, in a general sense, certainly, we've been taking advantage of the nice weather recently and going out and doing a significant amount of alley work from a public works perspective. That hasn't necessarily involved reconstruction, but certainly, we've been in there and trying to, trying to make some appropriate fixes as we can and taking advantage of the weather.
Thank you. And I've heard about that, and I think it's great to get out because the grading is, that regular maintenance has been something we wanted to catch up on, too. So, but I think her question might have been about the reconstruction of streets and alleys and so on, particularly citywide half-cent, so. Thank you.
And council members, you know, we received this at our place here tonight. I think I've received a copy, and that's in, for next week's agenda item will be the presentation of the Capital Improvement Plan. So don't leave it here. Take it with you and read it. I do note that it doesn't have the 2016 Capital Improvement Budget in it. So I guess if we want that, we have to get out last year's copy to see what the projects were for this year or last year.
Mr. Mayor, we'll, we'll make sure that that's available for the council.
I think it'd be good to see at least the 16, 16 projects. Deputy Mayor Hiller?
We did get an email today from Nikki that had just a short couple-page sheet that compared, some comparison from 16 to 17.
And some of us didn't have time to read our email.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't read it. I just saw it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Jensen?
Thank you, Your Honor. If anyone is interested, the otter's name is Tony. I've been informed. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments on this discussion item? That completes this item. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, again, the intent tonight was sort of kick off the process. Nikki Lee will be presenting the book we received next week. She'll do a fabulous job, I'm sure, going through the projects. And, and that'll be a more in-depth dive into the future projects that we have planned.
Thank you. We do have a person signed to speak on this item, Teresa Miller.
Good evening. My name's Teresa Miller. I love the concept. It's awesome. You can pull on here. Here's something I want to say about the CIP. It's a wonderful plan. But what scares me in here is I read, basically, what we're covering with projects are busy streets, where there's a lot of traffic, everything that's growing, growing, growing. But you forget, there's parts of Topeka that have, one of the original areas, my North Topeka area, that there is streets that have not been touched since 1984 that are crumbling to nothing. It's going to cost the city now more money if they would have just overlaid a few years ago to save a street. Then now they have to come in, and we've been told, they don't even know where they're going to get the money, that I might have to wait to 2020. This road's not going to wait to 2016. And here we are in 2016. It is a road that was made on dirt. It only had overlay on it. It has crumbled to nothing, and it is dirt again. It floods. It's a mess. And I've been told there's no funding to fix this. So this is what scares me. I'm being told all these high-travelled streets are all going to be fixed, and all these things are going to happen with the CIP. But what about these smaller streets? These are areas, this is a road in my area, which is North Taylor, which is not going to be touched with the SWOT grant funding. There is no funding for this. If I, I'd have to use all my money from the SWOT grant to fix this road. I can't do that. But this is one of the main roads, say, when we get the soccer fields all done and, and people like to shoot down Lower Civil Lake Road, which I hope eventually becomes a bike trail and a whole bunch of other things for that road. But here's my deal. They're going to miss their turn. They're going to come off 24 Highway. They're going to hit down into Taylor off of a four-way stop there at Lyman Road and Tyler and want to come down, and they're probably going to shoot off and hit down Taylor. Taylor right now is a mess. It, it needs to be redone. It floods. I've got roads that's deteriorating to nothing of theirs. So you kind of need to look at other roads in the city, not just the busiest streets, but the ones that the taxpayers pay money for to be fixed that have not been fixed in years. All we see, and this, this has come from the people in my, my area. We see the Expo Center getting money over and over again. We see the zoo being treated, and the animals in the zoo being treated better than the taxpayers in my district. So I, I hope you, in the near future, with the CIP funding, start looking at the smaller people and the smaller roads because we are deteriorating to nothing. I mean, we're almost ready to go to gravel on one street I have over there. So that's, that's all I would like to tell you. I need you to start looking for smaller projects. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Would you like to comment on what we're doing in the residential area? I know we don't, we can't do every street that is needed, but I know where, where plans are to do significantly more in the residential areas this year. Just to break that, make that point.
I'm happy to answer, and thank you, Teresa, for those comments. And certainly, it has been a focus of this body during last year's budget session. We're, we're calling this the Year of the Streets, and, and we are very much focused on, on looking at residential streets. And I'm happy to chat with Doug and Jason and make sure that, that we can at least provide you some information for your area.
Okay, thank you. That completes that discussion item. We'll go to item two. The clerk would read that.
B is discussion relating to a new southeast Topeka interchange.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This has been a, a topic of interest for this body for several months, actually, and for this community for several years. We have been working with KDOT and KTA in terms of taking a look at this. And I'd like to ask Mr. Gerber to provide an update as to where we stand on this conversation.
Good morning, buddy. Good evening again. As the city manager indicated, this is a project that has been ongoing for, in the most recent history, several months. And longer back than that, many, many years, this idea has been around. And just to take a brief look back at how we got to where we're at today. As you know, the gap between exits on the current Turnpike is about six miles. The average access across the city for access and, and interchanges is about a mile. And so that brings up a number of equity issues and justice issues for the 32,000 residents or a quarter of our population that isn't maybe appropriately served from the KTA exchange. Again, by way of further background, the MTPO made this a priority in 2014. The city did request to be included in KTA's 10-year plan. And we actually, last year, put some money in the CIP for, as a placeholder, $500,000 for design. About six months ago, we held two community meetings at which we talked about four specific design options. Those were held in September of 2015. And then in October of 15, this body approved a resolution for a 10% concept study by the KTA and their consultants. And that study was to look at our preferred design option on the 29th Street exit, an offset diamond concept. And as you recall, the city did share in 50% of that cost, approximately $20,000, just a little south of that. So this was the original cartoon sketch that we provided for this body to consider. As you recall, at the time, we talked about how this was one of the lowest potential construction costs. The impact to land uses in the area were moderate. But there was some question as to where the exit would hit on 29th and whether there was some appropriate spacing from the California intersection. So what we received back from KTA, first of all, everyone has a copy of this study at your place tonight, is their concept memo. As part of that concept memo, they came up with these two particular designs, the first of which is shown here. You can see that the access point comes through this parcel of land here. It includes a central toll booth here in the middle, and then this connector road to 29th Street. And they're estimating that cost to be almost $16 million, $15.9 million. The second offset diamond that they came up with, option two for this concept, was a more expensive item, approximately $23 million in cost. Includes the same connector road to 29th Street, although it's moved about 200 feet further to the east and makes better use of existing right-of-way. It would include four toll booths, which are noted here, 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 and here. So as would, as you might typically see on an interchange. And then it would also include a bridge replacement, which is really what, what drives up that cost from the option-one concept. Some other items of note from this study, it was about, I think, a 24, 25-page study. But just kind of boiling it down is KTA estimated that just slightly over half, to 70% of the traffic at that interchange would be new trips, as many as 250,000 last year potentially. And if they, if the growth that they anticipated came to fruition, it would be just south of 400,000 by the year 2045. KTI, KTA in this report also spent a significant amount of time analyzing how the tolls would impact their revenue and their ability to pay for this potential project. What they're indicating at this point is that the toll revenue may cover the operations, new operations of that space, but probably would not cover their capital investment or the investment it would take to build the interchange and the toll booths and, and the associated projects. So their conclusion in the study, which I'm sure everyone read, was that it wouldn't be feasible for them to go this project alone. But if they did have a partner, that would help show greater economic impact and would, would certainly give them more interest in the project. So a couple of things we think might, might happen in terms of the next steps is, certainly, KTA, what they presented to us was, as we indicated from the beginning, a concept study. Nothing would be final at this point. Nothing would be final at this point, but they may perform a more detailed analysis on tolls and traffic. One thing we would certainly need to do from a city standpoint is understand and measure the impact that it would have to our local streets if this happened, particularly and most specifically 29th Street. If you're pushing that many more cars to 29th Street, that's obviously going to, especially that close to California, there would certainly need to be some rehab done to that stretch of 29th Street. And we haven't done any sort of detailed analysis on what that might take yet. And then finally, we would obviously need to have a conversation about what level of cost sharing, if any, the council might have a comfort in. So at this point, that would conclude my presentation, and I'd be glad to stand for questions.
Thank you for boiling down the 45 pages, because there's a lot of information here, but I think this makes it very clear and pulls it together well, where we are. Questions and comments? Councilman Jensen?
Thank you. A couple of quick questions, and if you don't have the answers to these, that's, that's perfectly all right. I was interested, when the KTA did their revenue estimates based on the number of trips, did that include intra-city trips, which we're hoping would not cost anything, or was that simply trips that began and ended there?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I don't know the answer to that. My assumption would be that it would include all trips.
Okay. If we're, especially for partners in this endeavor, I would hope that they would be willing to allow folks that live within the city to move around the city at no cost. My other question is, part of the reason we're, we're trying to do this, excuse me, I understand, is to boost economic development in that area, and I'm wondering if a tax, tax increment financing district or something similar to that would be a good mechanism to help share the costs of this so that it doesn't impact the greater city budget? Just a thought. Thank you.
Mayor, would you have to look at that?
Yeah, I know, that, yeah, that's, that's another option out there. Do you, go ahead. Do you know about, oh, I'm sorry, did you want to comment?
I was just, Mayor and Councilman, I was going to comment in terms of economic development. One of the things that we talked about last October when we presented was that this area, particularly the California Crossing area, was ripe for some growth and development, some rehabilitation. And it's fair to say that since that conversation has happened, we've received many calls, potentially inquiring about that area, wondering what the city's financing options might be, not to get into specifics, but just generally, now that, that conversation has started, it's certainly spurred some interest from developers.
Good. Do you have any idea on the timeframe? I know that's, it's not in our control, when they would be taking next steps. This is now March, three months, six months.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would comment that this is part of their 10-year plan now, so any time between March of 2016 and 10 years from now. Certainly, I think a lot of it would depend on what we believe our next steps are in terms of how we want to participate from a cost-share perspective, how we, how we would want to approach 29th Street, and when that work might need to take place.
When I know the KDOT programs are, are out five, seven years many times, so it could be out, and if, assuming they have, KDOT has funding for their share is another issue. Councilman Shum.
Thank you very much, Doug. I appreciate this. I also appreciate that the fact that the city is gathering more information. I know that it's going to be very important, before we open it back up to public meetings, to have answers more specifically on the expected traffic, answers on the economic impact, and also answers as, after being discussed by this body, as to how much the city is willing to go in for cost-sharing, because I know that'll make a difference to everyone in District Four when we're getting those questions answered on whether to proceed or not. So I appreciate this so far. I'm looking forward to the possibility of the interchange. I'm strongly for it at this point, but I'm glad to be getting new information, and I appreciate the city's willingness to gather that before we take it back for public meetings.
Comment. Other comments? Deputy Mayor Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think this is great information. I feel like we're maybe at first base in terms of what, what information we might need to gather to make a, a good, long-term decision. One of the comments that I made when we talked about it before was that I, I do get concerned about, just from personal experience, as a driver and as an observer, that there seems to be quite a difference in terms of how many people will get off an interstate based on whether they can see where they're going. They can see the, the development right there, truck stops and so on, versus when you've got a kind of a wooded intersection with signs and you have to get off and go down just a little bit of a distance to destinations that you can't see. And I, my sense strongly has been that the, the dream or the goal, a goal, of having this interchange would be economic development for southeast Topeka, that it would help keep the people in southeast Topeka there to shop there, in part because other people would come and, and spend money or want to settle. I think doing some economic development research at this point to see, now that we've got a, a location and a design, to, to do a little more work to see what kind of economic development one might expect in an area like our southeast Topeka with an exit like this one, so that we're realistic. And part of the items to consider in this list were economic impact and a sense of a return on the investment if the city were to partner and put a substantial amount of money into it. So I don't know if anybody has any specific suggestions on that score in terms of doing further economic development work, but I would support that at this point.
Yeah, of course, that's where we have plenty, we will have time, if it's working five, five years or whatever.
It sounds like it. But rather than just wait, I think that that would help us make a good decision, and if that's, if I'm hearing that if, if it still looks good, that would help move KTA along as well, I think that would be a good next step.
Other comments, questions? We have some time to speak on this issue. First is Joseph Ledbetter.
Governing Body, I definitely support this project. High Crest began talking about this about two and a half years ago. The NIA strongly supports this project. There's 6,000 people in that NIA, approximately. And that's just one-fifth of the people would benefit from this project, because this will benefit the area by the lake, Highland Park. It'll, it'll benefit a larger area than just one segment of that population. I also might point out that when you think about economic development and highways, you've got to also consider that you've got Lake Shawnee just to the east, there's a lot of ball diamonds, there's a lot of activity there, you know, most of the summer into the fall. There are people that will use this interchange. I've talked to people east of the lake that want to use interchange to go to other parts of the city, and that would probably take some of the wear and tear off city streets because they'd be using the Kansas Turnpike and 470. As people in southwest Topeka use 470 often instead of what we call surface streets. So there's, there's a benefit potentially in that. The, the fact that we've got six miles that nobody can use, other than just to transit the, the city and part of the county, has, has never made sense to me ever since I started looking at this. I, I say, you know, here's 29th and California, a lot of potential to develop there, there's still vacant land there. You've got good demographics, especially going east with household income, acquiring acres and these other areas. Those people are now shopping in that 29th and California area, and you're just going to potentially give them more opportunity with more access to the highway to potentially, I'm not talking pie in the sky, I'm just simply talking, you might even get a hotel over there, you might get other types of development. And, and I know at least one developer that's very interested in that area. I don't know that he'll commit, but he's developed things on the east side before. And he, he believes that the east side has a lot of potential in, in different parts of, of east Topeka, or the eastern part of the city. I, I want to also say that we don't really know what the traffic count's going to eventually be, because when they built the Oakland Expressway about 18 years ago for about $30 million, nobody knew what that traffic would be. It's now 10,000 cars a day and trucks. So nobody knew because it had never been built. The Topeka Boulevard project was about $25 million, and it was about 10 years ago. The Expo Center were, is basically an economic development project in, in many ways, not every way, but 45 million for it, this is only one-third of that. A $15 million project versus a $45 million expenditure for the Expo Center. I'm not saying that you shouldn't build that or redo it, I'm simply trying to, to show you different ways of looking at this in cost and benefit. And so I, I do believe the state will come up with some of this money. I don't know yet how much, but I do believe that this is a good project to invest in for the community and to especially help 30,000 people that live in the city and, and some of them out of the county, I think they haven't even counted those, that will use that interchange potentially and help benefit that area. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next is Teresa Miller.
My name's Teresa Miller. I'm kind of confused because we're, we stretch our CIP money as far as it goes as it is. My grandmother lived over 29th in Iowa. I spent lots of years over in that area, seen it develop and change. A lot of things, I missed a lot that disappeared. I'm scratching my head to understand. We have a turnpike state toll there, a couple miles away. If you get down the street on 29th Street, and there, there's a couple miles, you've got a toll station. You go a couple miles another way, you got another toll station. Why are we wanting to put a third toll station or entrance to a turnpike in the middle of both of them? That I don't understand. The other thing I don't understand, until we develop that area, people over the years have tried and tried to make California Crossing something. So much changed, so many businesses have gone in there and never stay. Right now, it's, they're having, still having trouble keeping businesses in there. I would hate to have to put a road in just to help people develop their properties and their businesses because they want to gain financially versus go ahead and trying to get that area developed before we go put a turnpike entrance in there? That's what I would say. It sounds like we're putting a cart before the horses. I really don't see spending that kind of money for a turnpike entrance when we already have two pretty close to that. God bless you that you put the Oakland Expressway in because it cuts a lot of time off for people to get through. But I really don't think that at this time, we need another turnpike entrance. We need to develop the areas over there and then bring the people, not develop a road and then try to do the businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Other, other discussion points? That completes our discussion on that item. We go to item C. Clerk would read.
C is discussion of potential uses for the excess funds from the 2004 to 2016 county-wide Hafnsen sales tax.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the end of the, December 31st of 2016 will be the conclusion of the, the current county-wide Hafnsen sales tax. What we're going to be talking about tonight is really two things. Number one is what is the legal perspective in terms of how do you use excess funds? And second, and that will be done by Ms. Robertson, and then we will follow up with a conversation about how those funds could be used specifically and with some examples of ideas to throw out to this body.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coulson. As you know, we're operating under a, in a local agreement between the city and the county that was adopted in December of 2004. And in Section 3A of that agreement, excess funds are addressed. As Mr. Coulson relayed, that agreement will be coming to an end December 31st of this year. And because all of the projects that were attached or noted in Attachment A to that agreement, in addition to the Topeka Boulevard Bridge projects are done, they're completed and paid for, that December 31st date is significant because the JDO Finance Committee is required to provide the city and the county with an estimate of excess amount of funds available. And at this point in time, that is at $8 million. The city and the county can come to some agreement on how they want to use the funds, but the county, as I understand it, has passed a resolution just about a year ago, or maybe just over a year ago, that their intent is to use any excess funds available for the Northwest Carlson Road Bridge. So I think that they have already committed to what it is they'd like to do. So at this point in time, the city would need to determine how it wants to use the funds that it, it has available to it. If the excess funds are then addressed pursuant to statute, that's how the split occurs, there's a statutory, statutory formula. One half is based on the proportional rate of property taxes levied, the other half is based on the proportional rate of population of Shawnee County, Topeka, and the other four cities that are within Shawnee County, which Auburn, Rossville, Silver Lake, and Willard. The county assesses more taxes, levies more taxes, so their percentage is higher on that end as opposed to the city's lower, but the city has a higher population, so their percentage is higher on that end. And the long and short of it, those percentages are averaged, and that's how the state comes up with the split that each entity receives.
The $8 million you referenced is the total amount. That's not our share.
Correct. It's an excess of $8 million.
That's not correct. I mean, that's so we...
That's air share. I'll share.
City part.
That's, okay, I'm just making that clear. That is the, we, we expect it to be approximately $8 million to be available for the city of Topeka.
Correct.
All right. Okay. Are there questions about that aspect of the process that is being used? Councilman Jensen?
Thank you. So are those funds encumbered in any way? Can we only deploy them to specific projects?
Nope. They're unallocated funds that can be used for any purpose. The only thing that they cannot be used for is for a guarantee, for the payment of bonds. You can't do that, but that's not what we're going to propose.
So we can pour them into roads and be just fine?
Correct. Absolutely.
It doesn't have to follow what was on, what the other money has been spent on.
They're unrestricted. Unrestricted funds.
Yes. Councilman Shum.
One of the great things about having extra money is that it's extra. One of the bad things about it is you usually think of about 20 different ways to spend it before you actually get possession of it. I know that every single one of us has probably what could be called pet projects for our different council areas and districts, things that we would love to use some of that money for. I don't know that really there's anything that we could use it for that would be better than continuing to put it into streets and roads and repairing infrastructure across the city. So my suggestion, and obviously we'll have further discussion on this, is that we find a way to take that $8 million and put it into streets.
That is a segue, some would say, to the next part of the presentation. You want to talk some more on this?
Governing Body, thank you. That, that is indeed a perfect segue into the part that I'm going to be discussing tonight. And if I could have you pull up a map, Ellie. Early on in my tenure with the city of Topeka, in fact, about five months in, I was giving a utility, a presentation on utility rates, and I made the comment that I like cats, but there's a thousand ways to skin them. Now, to this day, I get grief about that from staff, particularly my boss, but I think that accurately describes the situation we're in. To Councilman Shum's point, there's many, many, many ways that we can go about spending this excess $8 million, potentially $8 million. That's, that, we'll reemphasize a couple times tonight that that number is only an estimate at this point. So... So, it may not be exactly $8 million, but it should certainly be in that ballpark. There's many ways we could do that. We could, we can invest in street projects, we can invest in utility projects, we can invest in sidewalks, we could look at paying cash for projects. There's a lot of different approaches that, and when I say "we," I should clarify by saying the city council, there's a lot of different ways that the council could prioritize where those funds go. So, as we are talking about this from a staff perspective, I put out the challenge to staff to think of a project that potentially incorporated all of these areas. Streets, water, wastewater, stormwater, sidewalks, bikeways, neighborhoods, quality of life. And to their great credit, one of the projects that staff came up with to use as an illustration, illustration purposes, it's not necessarily a recommendation, it's just an illustration of a potential project that we could move forward with, is this area from Topeka Boulevard to Buchanan Street, and from 6th to 8th. What you see on the screen in front of you is a highlight of where this area is, again, using some GIS that was put together. We could walk through a number of scenarios related to this neighborhood, a number of ways that this $8 million could be used. But, one of the things we talked about was that we take the money and we redo 8th Street, full depth replacement. We redo the neighborhood streets between Buchanan and Topeka Boulevard. We take care of some stormwater issues, in particular, those of you who've been on the council for longer than others will know that we have some what are called CSO issues, combined sewer overflow issues. We have places in town, and this is one of them, where stormwater and wastewater are combined. We can invest some funds and separate those, so that our stormwater and wastewater are combined. That would help meet some regulatory guidelines. We have a water main there that I believe is from the late 1890s, and has a history of breaks. We could certainly establish some bikeways along 8th Street. We could do sidewalks and streetlights. Again, it's an illustration of the way we could take the funds and spend them on a comprehensive project that would really be impactful to a particular area.
Okay. All right.
With that, my encouragement to the council would be to think broadly about how we could spend those funds.
So, actually, and you're showing this innocence as an example of something that can be done, that sounds like a lot to do with $8 million. You're going to be able to do all that with $8 million, of course, as much as we think would be available.
Mr. Mayor, we believe we can. The utilities and general engineering staff have spent some time analyzing these numbers, and they believe that we can bring in a project like this for approximately that amount.
And I think just, and I would comment, and I know there's, every council district has issues and has needs that are very high. I think in here, I think we're aware, on particular streets there, west of Topeka Boulevard, between 6th and 8th, are some difficult areas that need help. Some crime situations have been in the past, that's been much better now, but that's something that usually improvements help. And I do actually, interestingly, as people talk about infrastructure and streets, and how bad they are or aren't, I've had several people suggest that we drive Taylor Street from 6th to 8th, because people have said that's really a third-world country street. And I've done it, and it is, you know, it's just unbelievable, just when, you have to drive it to experience it. So, I think, I know, on that basis, I can see some need in this area, certainly that should be addressed. Councilwoman Claire.
Is, do we know, or is there a way, I want to go back to what Teresa said, to find out the streets that are the oldest, that haven't been worked for since the 80s? I mean, and I remember our tour, I remember Highland Parks, I know North Topeka, some of these streets are like almost nothing. Do we have that somewhere?
Councilwoman, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Claire, I think one of our struggles, and one of the things that Jason is going to, Jason Peake, our new Public Works Director, is going to work to address is a better street maintenance plan, and that's going to start with an inventory of our assets. So, the short answer to your question is, I don't believe we have anything in a comprehensive fashion like that, but it's certainly high on Jason's to-do list.
No. Go ahead.
Can we look at that for the $8 million? I mean, can we, I mean, I'm sure we can all think of streets that are worse, I don't know, is there some way to prioritize the streets?
I'm sorry, yeah. City manager?
Yeah, I want to make sure you're finished. So, I mean, you're really hitting on one of the toughest things that we've really dealt with, and I think the year was 2008, but it might have been prior to that. There was a, there's a engineering group called Stantec that did a study, and they came through and they measured our streets, and they made a determination as to what the quality of each of those streets were. And it's a nationally-known company, and many, many cities have used it, and it's quite good. It really kind of became the guiding force for how these decisions were made back in 2008. And I think one of the frustrations that staff had reached, and certainly council members had reached, is that we were really running down a game plan that had been established a long time ago, and a lot of things had changed, and some other ideas. So, I want to emphasize that we've had this conversation, maybe we take a couple of days and we send groups of teams out just to drive the city, and then come back and capture all of that data, and get a visual on that, and come back and do some follow-ups. One of the things that we think is absolutely vital with Mr. Peake joining the firm, and the fact that he has a significant street maintenance and street construction background, is that we want to pick his brain, and he's been here, I think this is week two. We want to pick his brain in terms of how do you address some of these issues, but we struggle with the same thing. To answer your question, we all could come up with a list, but $8 million is like real money, and it can make a very significant difference in a lot of projects, and whether we focus on an area like this, or whether we look at just identifying, how far can you go with a Millan Overlay program to get as many streets? We're very much focused in that. We want to be able to bring that, the best information we can back to you.
Councilman Shum.
Thank you. One of the things that concerns me when I see even a proposal like this, is that it's exciting, it's shiny, but it's not what we're hearing from our folks, that want streets and want streets to the exclusion of bikeways, to the exclusion of many other things. And we need to come up with money for wastewater projects. No argument there. But, one of the things that was mentioned at our council retreat is the necessity of the city to be proactive instead of reactive. And we are reactive right now, just laying it on the table with streets. We're reactive. We're trying to solve problems that have been years in the making. And I do want to, so again, reiterate my desire for the $8 million to be spent on streets and not on other projects, but also to encourage the council, as we've talked about before, to list out the street projects that we need to get done, to give our citizens an expectation of when this street will be done, and so that we can start budgeting for and being proactive with a street plan, so that we're not just saying, we've got a street falling apart over here, and it's news to half the council, that it's falling into dirt. We've got to be better. We've got to be more proactive than that. So, until we get to that point, where we have the streets listed out by priorities, by when we can get them done, and I know we're talking 20, 30, 40 years in the future, and some of the streets that we would put on that list might not be gotten to in our lifetime, but that's part of the challenge of being proactive and holding ourselves accountable, is that we've got to put it out there for the public to judge us on, and hold us accountable to whether or not we're getting those streets done. So, having said all that, that's not a discussion that we can wrap up tonight, but it's a discussion that I think that we have to continue to have as a council, and we do need to find sources of funds for projects like this. Don't get me wrong, I think it's a great idea, I just don't think it's a great idea for the excess $8 million.
Councilman Jensen.
Thank you. Excuse me. So, as many as you know, I've been trying to get a comprehensive plan on everything with a big scary number, which I fully expect to be in the billions of dollars, maybe even tens of billions, along the lines, Mr. Shum commented on, we do need to know what our plan is to replace every single road in this community. But, something we don't see is the water lines and the sewer lines. So, I think it would be a prudent use of some of this money to either internally develop comprehensive replacement plans for the streets, but also for our aging water system and our aging sewer system. I think we need to know now how long some of the stuff we have is going to last, and we need to determine if we can start socking away money at this point to replace those, because, I mean, this is, this is serious, serious money, folks, and if we don't know how long our sewer treatment plant is going to last in the future, and have a plan in place to start developing what we're going to do to replace it, we're going to get stuck in a pretty nasty situation. I mean, we're already in that situation with our roads, as obvious as it is. We can't afford to replace them, and we're not going to be able to afford to replace them probably in our lifetime. But we need to know that. Knowledge is power, and I think it'd be prudent to use some of this money to develop plans to figure out how long we have, and how long it's going to take to replace some of this, because if we don't, it's never going to get done, and we're going to be perpetually in this situation forever. Thank you.
Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thank you, Your Honor. I always appreciate what the staff does, and I know they do a lot of work to come up with some ideas and plans, but I had an email from a constituent in my district. He said, Elaine, I recently read in the Topeka Capital Journal that the council was going to address what to do with the money left over at the end of 2016 from the current half-cent sales tax program. I have a suggestion. How about repairing Wanamaker Road between 21st and Huntington? That's not even in my district. He said he visited with Doug Whitaker last summer in his office about the streets in one of my subdivisions of my district, and Doug said the city had $19 million from sales tax program and an escrow for further use. Some of this money needs to be immediately put to use on Wanamaker. It is a disgrace as to how it has been let go, and is in the condition that it is in. Doug told me that there will be a pavement quality index, PQI study, done in 2016 to classify all streets in the city to decide where the money should be spent. It seems to me that Wanamaker is a no-brainer. Seriously, can you tell me why we have let probably the most traveled street in Topeka get in the shape it is in, and what the plan is to upgrade it? So, that's my question. What is the plan to upgrade Wanamaker corridor? I know that we have a lot of out-of-town people that come down that street, and I'd like to know when it's going to be fixed. Thank you.
You, Mr. Gerber.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman, there is a project upcoming on Wanamaker this year, a pavement project, in addition to a waterline project. Again, to Councilman Jensen's point, every street project really has an associated utility project, and we oftentimes forget about the underlying work. So, the plan is to go and replace the waterline from 10th to 17th on Wanamaker, as well as do a Millan Overlay on that same stretch. And I believe, I need to look through the CIP, but I believe there's also a project south of that on Wanamaker in the upcoming CIP.
Okay. Very good. City manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just to also follow up on Councilmember Schwartz's comment, as we all, and especially you all, travel through the community, you hear about streets, you hear about frustrations, and the fact is, is that Topeka's not alone, in that there was a significant amount of deferred maintenance, especially during 2008 and previously. And you have examples of Flint, Michigan, where the deferred maintenance goes back 40 years, 50 years. I can tell you that we're continuing to work hard to be judicious in the money and how it's spent, and we are focused primarily on infrastructure issues, understand that there's need for other things too, but we really want to bring to this body a plan that when people come back to you, you can make a case that we're moving as fast as we can. At the same time, we have to recognize that there's progress, but there's also always going to be frustration, and we're going to share that continually and try to bring it forward.
Other questions, comments? Deputy Mayor Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I just wanted to thank the staff for being creative. I had no idea that this neighborhood was going to be in this picture tonight, but I will tell you that, as the mayor mentioned, those streets are arguably the worst in town, and they haven't even been on the list, because they've got bricks under them, and the asphalt is all potholed all over them, and because they didn't hit the Stantec measure of likely having potholes more than four to six inches deep, because the bricks were there, they weren't getting done at all. I mean, I was elected in '09, and people were calling me every day from Taylor Street, saying, I can't even take my mother down this street. And I appreciated that the staff is putting together a CIP tour, and this is exactly where I was going to say, I wanted to take people in my neighborhood, and people from that neighborhood were planning, and they don't know about this, but are planning to come to the public hearing on Thursday night, because it's so bad, and this does have Seventh and Clay floods, that's where Care Parable School is. They don't have to be in that neighborhood. You know, they have to park and take their kids through six inches of water to walk up to the front of the school. That's terrible. I took pictures of them one time and sent it in, the whole intersection was flooded, yet we've just been kind of stuck. And so, whatever works out, but I really appreciate the staff looking at the dimensions of a challenged neighborhood and a place that would make a difference. Back to just some general comments, I've been saying largely what Councilman Shum's been saying for years. I too don't want us to get too far into anything new yet, until we take care of what we've got, and avoid going to debt if we can. And so, projects that are done for cash, important to me. Those might be projects that we already had planned, that we pay for with cash instead of bond, as far as I'm concerned, and certainly, one way or another, either using that money for streets, or freeing up money to do streets is important to me. Thank you.
Okay. We have people signed to speak on this issue. The first is Joseph Ledbetter.
It's not a problem that you have very often, and maybe only once, every 12 years, but I like the idea of infrastructure, always have. We certainly saw some benefits to infrastructure in High Crest over the last two years. Some of the streets that were talked about tonight that were falling apart, I saw those in High Crest, and they were put back together. Now, that project costs three and a half million dollars, and we got quite a few streets done, I mean, dozens. So, I'm not sure that you can't get more bang for the buck than what you're maybe talking about, because those projects were really well-done, had really good contractors, and really good administrators, you know, administrating it. I also, not just to mention streets, and maybe that's where this should go, but I like urban redevelopment, I like the idea of maybe some of this money, and maybe it's not going to be well-heard tonight, maybe potentially going to housing. We've got some real tough situations in some of these neighborhoods. It's not every neighborhood that has real tough housing situations, but a lot of the NIAs know about it, especially if they're intensive. And so, I know the manager talked about this idea a few months ago. I don't know how we can get it off the ground, but I would like to see it at least being discussed at some level. Anyway, that's all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Second speaker is Ralph Crummens.
Okay. City council members, Mr. Mayor, city manager, and citizens, I'd like to speak to you, you know, I think you're... know, I think you've been speaking about the roof and the ceiling and the floor in a house, I'd like to talk to you about the piano. And the reason I say that is, in addressing this, I'd like to suggest that the city consider an expansion of trails within the city and county. Now, let me explain my proposal through three points. Residents are calling for expansion of trails. The funds that we would allow for expansion of trails could be leveraged through a transportation alternative grant, 401, and there are many desirable projects within the city that could move forward. First, how do we know that residents are calling for continued expansion of trails? In July 2014, Shawnee County Parks and Recreation Master Plan was published, and this established a long-term goal of expanding trails to 150 miles from 43 miles currently. In establishing the plan, many county forums were held to gain input to the plan, as well as a survey of 2,000 residents was made. 594, or 574 responded. Some of the conclusions from the study. Shawnee County residents believe our parks and recreation facilities are a central component of the quality of life in Shawnee County. Two, through the survey, usage of trails tied with the zoo for the record-most used park and recreation facilities at 61%. So 61% used trails, used the zoo, and that was only below 63% for lakes. Third, through the survey, when residents rated the most important park and rec facility, 50% rated trails the most important. The next highest was large parks at 30% and small parks at 27%. So conclusion, park and rec facilities are a central component of the quality of life of Topeka. 61% of residents used trails, and 50% of them rate them as the most important park and recreational facility. Second point is that these funds can be leveraged through a transportation alternative grant, and we've done this before, where we put up 20% of a grant, and it's approved by the state DOT, they'll provide the other 80%. So we could turn 200,000 into a million, or a half a million into two and a half million. So we're not talking taking 8 million and doing this, we're talking about taking a small portion of it. Finally, there are many projects within the city and your districts that we could move forward with. We could expand Soldier Creek Trail North, my favorite, since I live up that way, or start on the trail along the river in Oakland. Perhaps we could pave the Landon Trail south, the, south, first to the, the boundary of the city and then the county line, and we might even be able to make major headway for the Deer Creek Trail, which is out, and with its eventual link up to Shawnee County Trail. In conclusion, residents want more trails, and this use of money for trails would be well-received by your residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Teresa Miller.
Good evening. Again, my name's Teresa Miller. Boy, there's a lot of people wanting that money. I, it breaks my heart to have to say this again and bring up my streets, but I'm looking at this project that's on the screen. Those streets have been asphalted several times since any of my streets over in North Topeka have. When we get potholes, they just come and fill them in. I can point to, have a north-to-Topeka with the potholes on my side. Just take, go down Tyler for a while, you'll hit a lot of them. Here's the deal with this money, and I might be wrong, but we had an agreement of all this, this money, where this money came from in the first place. It was an agreement which expires 2016, that, and the word on the ballot, because this was put on the ballot, how we wanted to spend this money, was exclusively for the projects that were listed on the ballot at that time. The word is exclusively, as I've been told by certain people, to, to use. That means that money was only supposed to be used for that projects. So my question is to you all, is this money supposed to be put back on ballot for the people to decide again to vote on it? That's my question, because I've been asked that question several times. The other thing is, is that I, I just want to make sure that we spend the money wisely and not redo projects that we have. Prime example, 10th Street, in between Gage and McVicker, where it had to be redone several times. We didn't get it right the first time. That was wasted money. We have, in the past, redone projects that cost the city money because something went wrong. We need to start looking at that, and we also do projects that we don't wind up with the water and with the sewer, that if we're going to tear an area out, we need to look underneath a little bit to make sure that we replace what we need to replace while we're there, and see if that's probable. With the instance, we, and I love the project you guys did, we had Lyman Road done to Topeka Boulevard. I thought, when Topeka Boulevard was just recently done, and when they connected Lyman Road's new plumbing to Topeka Boulevard, that there wouldn't be a problem. Evidently, that was not new plumbing in there, because it sprung a leak right after that job was done. So, we kind of need to look underneath the ground a little more too when we do all these projects, but my main concern is, I want to know for a fact, because we're just exclusively in there on the ballot, if we could actually go and use the money the way everybody wants to use it, or it does need to be put back on vote for the people to vote how we want to spend this excess money. Thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you, and I think I would ask the city attorney to, to respond to that on the ballot and, and the projects and how the excess funds can be used.
Thank you, Mayor. The ballot included all of the projects, and those projects then were incorporated onto the back of that December 9th, 2004 agreement. All those have been completed and paid for, so because of that, the interlocal agreement then provides that any excess funds are split in accordance with a Kansas statute, and I could provide you with that information if you'd like, but it is a statutory requirement.
So what exclusively means nothing?
No, they are to be used for those projects, but once those projects that were voted upon were completed and paid for, then excess funds are to be split in accordance with the statutory formula. It's established.
And that, and that was stated in the, in the provision, how, if, if excess funds should occur, it was stated how they would be spent.
In the interlocal agreement itself.
Yeah. Okay, so I think, yeah, so we want to be sure, we're following the law on this. Is there, are there any other comments on the excess funds discussion point? Mr. Gerber?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Just, I wanted to correct a miss, when I misspoke earlier, I gave some bad information, which I hate to do, but I can correct it now, thanks to my staff. There's a project on Wanamaker this year from 10th to 21st. I think I said 10th to 17th. It actually goes to 21st, they're going to do some work on signals there, as well as expanding the intersection, so you should see that this summer.
And, leaving that item, but there is a public hearing tomorrow night. Would you want to comment on, on Thursday night? Correct?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Thursday night, there's an open house, a public engagement process on the proposed CIP that'll take place in the Holiday Building from 6:00 to 8:00, and it'll be a chance for the public to come and engage with staff. We'll have staff and poster boards on some highlighted projects. Staff will be there to answer questions and talk about anything that might be on the public's mind.
Very good. Thank you. Other comments? Deputy Mayor Hiller?
If I could ask one more question of Mr. Gerber. As these years have progressed and we've been looking forward to this time, one of the projects that I brought up quite a bit was wanting to use this money to, if we needed it, to make sure that we did all of our match for the big work on the levees on the river in cash. Could, could I ask Mr. Gerber whether we are expecting to be fully funded for that, or whether we might still need some cash?
Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, thank you. We expect by the end of the project that we will be fully funded through our stormwater funds. We anticipate that the project will run this year, next year, 2017, and potentially 2018, but we will have the cash in hand to, to meet our approximately 35% match.
Which is?
About $10 million, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Saying no other points, that completes our non-action items. Next, we have announcements, and we'll have our preliminary agenda for next week. City Clerk.
On the March 8th preliminary agenda, we'll have one layer proclamation for St. Patrick's Square, we'll have two presentations, one on the Topeka Metropolitan Transit Authority update and on the Kansas levy project. On the consent agenda, there'll be a board appointment to the Topeka Landmarks Commission. Non-action items will include a discussion on City of Topeka Health and Wellness Center, a discussion on the Topeka Pedestrian Master Plan, and a discussion on the proposed 2017 to 2021 CIP.
Okay, thank you. For our announcements then, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first announcement, there will be a public meeting regarding the placement for design of Topeka's new Wayfinding signs, and that's at 6:30 on Wednesday, March 2nd, at the Big Gage Shelter House in Gage Park. Additionally, just want to announce that Amber Reynolds, who was introduced earlier this evening, she was nominated and appointed to the National Geospatial Advisory Committee. It's an advisory committee responsible for providing leadership and direction for federal geospatial programs, which has a very significant impact on municipalities, and we are one of only two municipalities that are represented on the community, so it's on the committee. So it's, it's quite an honor for her and a, a good reflection on us as a community, and also on March 9th, there will be a Topeka Boulevard planning project from 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. in Holiday, and that will specifically be dealing with Topeka between 7th and 11th Street. To conclude my comments, I just want to recognize a few people in the audience who are new, new to the city. The first one left, Kelly Ryan, was a levy engineer, but he got out too quick. I also want to recognize Jason Peak. Jason, if you can get a, give a little bit of a wave. Jason is the Public Works Director, but we will refer to him as the Street Czar. He is the man who has a lot of stress and pressure in his life, but we're going to work with him to make sure that he is successful. He brings a tremendous amount of experience to a very significant need in this community. I also want to recognize interim Fire Chief Tim Wayne, who's sitting in the audience this evening, and Tim is, is joining us just today, you might have read about him in the paper the last couple of days, but Tim really is a, a guy who, who is a fireman's fireman, and he brings a lot of, a lot of experience that really focuses on things that we as a community are talking about, and has a great EMS background and community medicine background, and we certainly have some, some challenges at this particular point, and we are going to make the best decisions on behalf of the city.
Very good. Thank you. And then, the Deputy City Manager has an announcement.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. One of the things you've heard about over the last several months from Mr. Coulson is the Polar Plunge, which took place a couple of weeks ago. We were recognized this morning by representatives from the Special Olympics, and I'm handling this because part of the recognition was for Mr. Coulson, and they recognized Topeka particularly in three areas. The first was the highest fundraising team across Topeka, and the fourth highest in the state, so congratulations to us on that, and it was the highest amount ever raised by a team from Topeka. The second recognition was we had the team with the most participants, with 15, and I believe all 15 members went in, so that's also...
And they came back.
100% of them, everybody made it out alive. And then, specially recognized was City Manager Coulson, who was the highest fundraising individual, I believe in the state. He took that, he raised $5,650. He beat the next person by $25, and so, as I understand it, Chief Brown is taking credit for that, since he helped put him over the top, so we wanted to have a special recognition for that, that event and what he did.
Because of the speedo in the Cape?
It was the lax speedo. Another first for our city. We're leading in another area. Councilwoman Claire.
Okay. Jim, I'm afraid the contract you signed with Gager, Arizona, has broken some trust between the city and the citizens, but I understand why we can't talk about it tonight due to the lawsuit. However, I have heard from 50-plus citizens across Topeka, and at some point in time, my questions and theirs need to be answered, and I hope that's sooner rather than later.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Schum. Councilwoman DeLisla. Councilman Jensen.
Thank you. The City Manager stole my item tonight. I was going to encourage everyone to go to the Wayfinding meeting tomorrow night at the Big Gage Shelter. I, I do really encourage you to do that. This will hopefully set what our public image to people running through the city will be for the foreseeable future, and it's really important that we get this right, so I'd encourage everyone to show up. First Friday is Friday. You know, this is the, the beginning of spring, I'm optimistic. Bunxatani Phil supports me in that decision, I'm told. Get out, enjoy this community. This is going to be an incredible summer, an incredible spring for Topeka, so really, get out there and start enjoying it now, because it's only going to get better. Thank you.
Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thank you, Your Honor. Someone mentioned tonight that the zoo animals are treated better than some taxpayers in Topeka, and I wanted just to mention that the zoo does a superb job of raising funds that are not all taxpayer dollars. FOTS, the Friends of the Zoo, has gone to so many lengths to raise funds, and they're continuing to do that. And I can say that because I spent four days last week at the zoo with Chief Justice McFarland's sale, and I can't tell you how those zoo employees are so special. And so, my gem of Topeka tonight is family. Chief Justice McFarland used to talk about family and court family, and I think tonight we have Topeka family, because Topeka turned out for that, and it was just an awesome event, and we had our personal family members and friends and the media. We just had so much, and I know it, it was a giant success. We had 150 people waiting at the door to get in, but they, but the event itself was just spectacular. We had, and somehow we need to give Fawn some kind of an award, because she was there, Fawn Mosher was there every day, and I know she worked eight days last week, so I just want to thank the zoo and thank the city for all the efforts and the media, everybody that showed up for that sale, because we are one Topeka family. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cohen. Councilman Harmon.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. This Thursday evening, in addition to the CIP meeting, there's going to be a dinner banquet sponsored by the Junior Achievement. It's their annual Business Hall of Fame banquet. One of the recipients and honorees is Neil Dobler, who for many years was the City of Topeka Public Works Director, and was the first acting City Manager for 11 months when we changed the former government back in April 2005. The other honorees are Dick Pratt, who is a longtime retail business leader here in Topeka, Eugene Williams with KTWU, and Andy Corbin, President and CEO of Blue Cross Blue Shield. So I want to commend each of those individuals for their business leadership here in Topeka to make us a better community. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Hiller.
Just one item, remind everyone that, for a variety of reasons, we will be celebrating St. Patrick's Day in Topeka on Saturday, the 12th, rather than on the 17th. People really look forward to the parade and all the celebrations downtown, so I encourage people to set their calendars, and as part of that, ever since I first got elected, I have participated in carrying one end of the Topeka banner at the front of that parade, and so I wanted to throw out and, and offer now that if somebody would like to carry the other end of that with me, let me know, and we'll, we'll get, get connected up. It's, just need to get there about 11:30, the parade starts at noon, I think, and, and then we're right at the front of the parade and get done, and if, if two people want to carry it, I can, I can bow out and let other people take a turn, but I'm happy to make those arrangements, and it's fun. Thank you.
Well, and we have a proclamation ceremony next week that'll kick off the St. Patrick's Day weekend. I just, I want to mention one other, or make one other comment, and that is, we had a, a tragedy in a Kansas town this last, in the last two weeks, in the last meeting at, at Heston, another incident of a shooter, and as, this is so common anymore, it's happening in someplace in our country almost every day, and it's, it's, as they say now, it's not if you will have one, it's when you have one. And there, again, the law enforcement was fantastic, as you perhaps read, saved lives... And there again, the law enforcement was fantastic, as you perhaps read, saved lives. And I think, I noticed that, I note that entities in Topeka are making plans, how do we, how do we operate, or what happens if a shooter occurs in one of the buildings that we're in? And I know the council members received documents from the Chief Brown, which I think is significant, that we have to be very much aware. And it's not that we're, it's a matter of being prepared to be aware that something like this probably will occur at some time in the city of Topeka. And we have to be aware of how we plan for that. So I acknowledge what the police chief is doing. I think this is so important, that we plan ahead. On public comment, we have two persons. First is Samuel Riley, Sr.
I just have more of a question, really. I recently was working on a vehicle in my yard, in a driveway that was on jack stands, and code compliance come by and cited me for it. Last time I knew you were allowed one unrunning vehicle on your property or in your yard. I wasn't aware until code compliance told me that last year, the rule had changed in like July, where you couldn't have that. I was just curious to know if it was ever published, or how are we supposed to know that if it's not published to us?
Okay.
Because I know a bunch of people that have race cars, have cars, junk cars around in the yard and stuff like that, that's sitting on just blocks or stuff like that. I actually had the truck sitting on jack stands with the jack in front of it and was working on putting the rear end together on it. And I'm 90 percent disabled through the VA, so I only work on it when I fill up to going out and working on it and stuff like that, because I don't have $2,000 to pay somebody to do that.
Okay. And Mr. Riley, we don't do question and answer during public comment, but if you'll remain after the meeting, we'll have, we'll talk to you about it. We'll have someone that'll visit with you about it and give that information.
And one other question I also have is out at the VA hospital, there's no signs marking where you're supposed to park. I was recently out there and got my eyeglasses fixed and got a ticket for improperly parking my truck and trailer, but there's nothing that says where you're supposed to park out there.
Okay. Well, we can look into that.
Okay.
And we'll talk to you after the meeting, okay? All right, thank you. The second person is Joseph Ledbetter.
Thank you, Governor Body. The street she wants fixed is Proctor. I told her, you've got to say the name of the street. Anyway, just helping her out. I too enjoyed that fundraiser at the zoo. I found some really cool stuff in that estate, but that was, that was a good event, it was well-publicized by the bar. They emailed all of us. I want to talk about JADO. I want to talk about the agreement that we're about to leave, the one that we're under and is about to expire. That interlocal agreement, I went back, and I think the first one was 2001, so it's a little more dated than we think. Since that original agreement was made between the two governing bodies on both sides of the parking lot about economic development, and I understand there's other parts of that, but the economic development component is the one that all of you have a fiduciary responsibility to oversee. And after the Gardner study last year, it was well-sounded and well-shown that that oversight was not being done. But the agreement that we're under, we've since changed from a strong mayor, former government. We've now, the mayor has a vote, which he didn't use to have on this body, and yet most of you don't have a vote on that JADO body. We've had changes in the county commission somewhat. I mean, they now have parks and rec, they didn't use to have that. So we've had some changes, and when you go through these kinds of changes, you need to make your adjustments. Furthermore, if you have a responsibility of handling a lot of money of $5 million a year, and you don't have the authority to have a vote, it'd be similar to having Ms. Jenkins show up in Congress, and she's ready to vote, she's ready to act on a bill, and she has no vote. Well, if somebody in Washington told us, well, only two of the four congressmen get to vote, we'd have, we'd have an uproar. That wouldn't go over well. But for many years, city council people have been told, show up to the meetings, but don't vote. And often, in your four-year terms, the city council does not even get a chance to vote. Some of those people are never elected to have a vote in JADO, but yet they belong to the body. So when those two governing bodies come here, as I observed a few weeks ago, I saw one of the county commissioners just go off on a city council person who simply raised an issue in this very chamber. Well, this is his chamber, just as it's the people's chamber. And observing it, I was a bit offended that anybody would come in here from another body of government and start chewing on a person who simply raised issues. Now, I have a solution, as I like to do. I like to come up with solutions to problems, because, you know, you don't want to just complain, you want to fix it, right? So I'm thinking, I know that each of you need a vote, and I know that each of the county commissioners need a vote. And nobody's saying the county commissioner shouldn't have a vote when they come into this room, even though some of them are saying you shouldn't have a vote. So what I thought I'd do, since the county commission, you know, maybe they're a little overworked. Maybe we need five county commissioners, and then they can have five votes. And I thought that might take away some of the angst and some of the heartburn. I know that Saline County, oh, I'm out of time.
Yes.
I was just really getting...
Your time has expired.
I'd like to finish my comments. If I could have two minutes, I will wrap it up.
Councilman Harmon?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd make a motion to extend two minutes.
Councilman Schum, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes?
I was going to say 10 votes, but one's missing, so nine votes. Thank you very much. So I know that recently, Saline County, which is a much smaller county than us population-wise, went to five commissioners from three. And I'm going, you know, maybe they've got a good idea, maybe we need to hit on that. Maybe Shawnee County, which is much larger, and our county commissioners have, you know, much more responsibility than Saline County, maybe we need five members. And then we could have five districts, five county commission districts, and they could each vote when they come to the JADO meetings, just as they do now, but they'd have more votes, since it seems to be a point of contention that they don't want to lose their power. So I thought I'd come up with a way to give them power, since I wanted the city council to have the power they should have had already, which is the authority to take on the responsibility and actually be able to implement it, and actually be able to work on these budgets and whatever other items come up for economic development, and actually be able to do your jobs well, which I know you want to do. And I just believe that with that vote, we'll get a lot better result with economic development. And I do believe that, you know, this is a way forward, this is a solution. I heard a lot of complaining from a couple, well, at least one county commissioner, you know, saying, wow, you're just taking away our power. So I don't want to do that. So I come here in attitude of fairness, and I'm just saying, okay, we'll give you five votes. We need five county commissioners. And I think that could be put on the ballot this year. If the county commission would like to do that, I'd love to see them draft that and put that on the ballot, so we can have five county commissioners in Shawnee County. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. That concludes the executive session. We do have, excuse me, that includes, I'm looking the wrong, yeah, okay, going back. Concludes public comment. We have two executive sessions. If the city clerk would give the parameters for the first one, please.
The motion would be for the governing body to recess into executive session for a period of 30 minutes to consult with the city's legal counsel regarding potential litigation, protected by attorney-client privilege. In order to aid in the discussion, the following individuals should be President, City Manager Coulson, Deputy City Manager Gerber, Director of Finance Kaufman, and myself.
That's the parameters. Councilman Schum moves. We're going to executive session. Councilman Jensen, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes?
Nine having voted yes. We're going to session. Let's take about a 10-minute break for 18.